Thank you everybody for coming today. And now for the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion, I mean, for adoption of the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Consent agenda motion?
We need to talk about the urgency.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And then, the Board of Education, acknowledgement, employee of the month? You're Jenny Myers and Megan Roth. Go first. Jenny, will you go both at the same time, or?
No, we'll do one at a time.
One time, okay.
Which one?
Jenny. And do you want a mug or a bag?
A bag.
Thanks. These are different.
They're cute.
You'll read the, you'll read the list next. Okay. Says Jenny helps so many district employees navigate the new insurance, all with a smile and a calm, and a calm to make the employee feel valued. Jenny advocates for us. She always makes time to answer your questions, no matter how insignificant they may seem.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And Megan Roth? You have been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Megan brings a genuine and admirable energy to work every day. In the classroom, she fosters a welcoming and supportive environment where all students feel safe and valued. Beyond the classroom, Megan brings passion and energy to the court and field, instilling a love for the game in her student athletes. As the lead sponsor of K's, she dedicates countless hours organizing and guiding students in philanthro- Philanthropic? Philanthropic, thank you. That leave a lasting impact on the community. And do you want a mug or a?
I'll give them. Thank you.
Well deserved.
Moving on to information discussion items, or what? Oh, board of knowledge?
Yes, some others might have some board of knowledge.
First, the high school. Jeff can't be here, he's kicking off Community Night over at the high school, but he'll be here a little bit later. Tomorrow, we have our second annual Panther Development Day. Huge thank you to our Student Services Department for putting that together. Trying to bury it up from last year, have a lot of different community ideas, people coming in, and just get to more along tomorrow. Want to congratulate, did she already leave? She's Deanna out there. Yeah, she's not sitting here for a second. All right, lady!
Yes, sir.
So we wanted to acknowledge Deanna Fawcett, Secondary Teacher of the Year for USC 368. There you go. And then, athletic wise, volleyball right now is moved up to the number three spot. And, not that we've got to get through this week and weekend, but we are posed, or on track, to host a sub-state, would be next, not this Saturday, next Saturday, the 25th. We don't know yet if we would host, and we don't know for sure if we're locked in, but right now it looks good. So, we've got to get through this week.
So just go middle school next, right? So, I want to talk about, we've got lead choir coming up next Tuesday. So we're going to have about 300 kids from Lisburg, Ottawa, and us that will pack our gym Tuesday night. Our choir, the concert will be at 6 o'clock, so if you want to come, please, please join us. We just had our choir concert last week, and we filled the auditorium, and so that was awesome. Dr. Allison does a fantastic job. Also want to share, we have our site council meeting tonight, and had some good participation, great discussion. So, appreciate our members for showing up to that, so it was awesome. So, things are cooking pretty good in middle school. Ben's got some activities he wants to talk about.
Yeah, so fall sports is wrapping up tomorrow, our last home football game. Our eighth graders are playing for the championship team in the frontier league middle school, seventh grade. They're playing for seventh place as well, so that's at 4 o'clock and immediately after. Volleyball's had a little bit of a tough year, but they really stuck through it and did a great job finishing out the year, working hard. Cross-country, also did a really good job, all of our runners that went out had new personal records throughout the year. We even broke three records. Hazel Seabird, one of our seventh graders from Holy Trinity, she broke the seventh grade girls' record, and then broke her own record the next week by, you know, half a, half a second or so. And then, one of our seventh graders, Channing Lofton, he broke the seventh grade boys' record. Winter sports, beginning wrestling practice, and girls' basketball started up today. They hit the court and the mats next week, so we'd love to have everyone out to support them.
Alright, who goes next? We are excited and proud to, that Cory Flynn was named Elementary Teacher of the Year. Very, very deserving. I did not include this in my board report, but fourth grade just did their field trip to JA Biz Town. It is a great learning opportunity. If you get a chance, I would encourage you to look at our Facebook page. We have a live stream there. It's one of those experiences that you can't really understand what it's all about unless you really are there. So that's why I did that Facebook Live. So I encourage you to go out and look at that.
At Cottonwood, we started off today with donuts with Mr. Riffle, had a great turnout. Who doesn't like a free donut, right? And then we have book fair going on tonight. We also had a site council meeting with great turnout as well. Our first grade goes to field trip to Deanna Rose tomorrow. And then, we've had really good growth early on, as we measure our reading scores, checking in there. We've had 25 students, a decrease of 25 students in kindergarten since the beginning of the year, that require intensive reading support. So, we've advanced 25 kindergarten students up to the next reading level, which has been great. And then we've also been able to advance 49 of our first and second graders up into a higher reading group as well, into a higher fluency group. So, a lot of good things going on with our reading at Cottonwood, so.
Well?
I was just going to mention that all the consent agenda items really showed strong community support of our school district. In this month, it's financial things. Of course, shocking that you would hear financial things for a minute. Just look at the numbers on there, on the First Option Bank, that was the check presentation from the local debt card program Friday night's football game. Over $49,000, which funds charitable initiatives in there. You saw that in my board report. One of the things that the charitable fund does is some things for the Teacher of the Year program, and there's some recognition for them, not individually, but for a building project or a district project, depending on different levels. And that used to be funded by our endowment, but that has shifted over to charitable. So just one of the things that does. The Maury, Miami County Youth Protection Team, that it used to be called Maury Out for Moms, that group disbanded, and they gave their remaining funds to Parents and Teachers Program, kind of aligns with the mission and population they used to serve, an age group. So again, very nice of them to think of the school district to disperse funds to. And, and the hospital, University of Kansas Hospital now, Miami County Medicine Center, paid for the campus. They give the district $5,000, they've done that for at least 20 years, I would say. Because I've been here going on 19, and them and First Option have been from the beginning. So, again, significant contributions. And that was on the heels of last month, where you saw the endowment stuff. And the endowment, I mentioned a little bit in my board report, we just recently distributed the Roman Barner Teacher Fund, which again, community support through endowment, but that gives our classroom teachers money to spend on consumable items every year that, in addition to their building budget. So it's $100 for elementary and 75 for secondary per teacher. So, that was over $10,000, it was just recently paid out from endowment for Roman Barner. So, anyway, I thought all those things cumulative add up to a significant amount, so worthy of mentioning. So, we appreciate all the community support.
Now, information discussion items? State assessment results? Yeah, I get to do that. I'm excited about that too, because it's going to feel like a really long board of acknowledgement, because they are so positive, so I'm excited about getting to share these with you. I'm just going to do a brief walkthrough of our state assessment results from the 2025 spring. Where were they, where they landed, and then where we came from, and then a little bit about where we are going to go, or are we going to make any maneuver this? Okay, alright. See if I can do it. Alright, so before we dive into the results, let's just talk a little bit about the elephant in the room, and that it is a new test. And so, before we dive into the data, let's just address that. This is a, what we were doing up until this last year was a 10-year-old test that was first started in 2015. And after 2015, we started taking it, and we started realizing in education that what we were seeing, and the results that we were seeing, were not aligning with what we were seeing in results in other areas. Specifically, when we looked at national norms and national norm tests, what students were scoring on the state assessment prior to this last year were like in the top 25% nationally, to just be proficient on the state assessment. So we were finding the kids that were scoring in Level 2, were scoring 22 and above sometimes on the, on the ACT. And so it just didn't really match up. So in 2019, they contracted to rewrite the test, and so this last revision was well overdue. And so they re-contracted to do it in 2019, excuse me. And then, we took the test, and then we had 141 Kansas educators from across the state come and help set the PEP scores. So they had people that are in the standards, know the standards, work with the standards, work with the students, be able to tell you what should the PEP scores be. And so I think that that was a really huge bonus and positive. Something else that gets really confused is what the test actually measures. What this test is actually measuring is how a student performs on the grade level content standards only. It's not going to tell you whether a student's below grade level, it's not going to tell you whether they're above or anywhere in that continuum. All it's telling you is that the student scored this score on this test on this day, and it's a snapshot of what they are able to understand and apply in the grade level content only. So I think that that can get confusing, and so it's really important as we look at these that we know that these are just measuring the grade level content. And so, Level 1 means a limited ability to demonstrate knowledge. And this is the area that if a student scores Level 1, we know that there's probably some barriers, and that there's going to be, need to be some support as we move forward into the next year, for the next grade level standards. Level 2 shows a basic ability, this one's tricky, because if we have a student that's scoring Level 1, and we can get them into Level 2, we celebrate that, right? If we have a student that's scoring Level 3, and they go back down into Level 2, then we have to look at that. So Level 2 is the tricky one. It's a hinge point, and so it's either a celebration, or we're looking at, okay, why do we have a student that's scoring there? Level 3 is proficient, and Level 4 is advanced. And so those are the four different levels that you can score. So that's kind of just a little bit of background there, and I really want to dig into the good stuff. Okay, so let's start with ELA, or reading, sometimes called reading. So this bar graph right here is our performance, USC 368's performance compared to the state average. So the green and the light green bars, those show our students at proficient and advanced. The combined percentages show that we have over 51% of our students at Level 3 and 4, which is outperforming the state significantly, only 43, 44%. Our students are also outperforming the state in Level 1 by a huge margin. And so this is really encouraging, because this is a benchmark test, this is the first year we're taking this test, and we will measure off of this year. So this is really, this is really, really positive and exciting. Kudos to our, our, our whole district in this. Are these all grade levels? Yes, this is the entire district. So, and we're going to dig into that in just a little bit. And so that is ELA. And then we'll move on to math, and we're going to see very similar results. Okay, we're outperforming the state average in Level 3 and 4, as well as keeping our numbers significantly lower in Level 1. And this is a district-wide lens, and so it's a very big lens, that we're looking at all students, 3 through 10, that take this test. Remember, 9th grade doesn't test. So we're going to narrow the lens here in just a minute. But I think that this is a really, really positive start, and very, very encouraging, and shows all the work that the teachers and students have been putting in. And so, as we look at this, this is going to be a little bit more of a narrow lens, this one's a little more, one of my favorites, because it shows you that across the board, our average reading scores for each grade level, when we compare our district grade level to the state, we are higher or at than the state in all grade levels. That's phenomenal. Okay, so we are at or above the state average in all grade levels. So we are the green, and then the state is, I guess that's like a dark blue. So, that is really, really good, that's a great place to start. So now we're narrowing the lens even further, okay? So we're just going to look at Level 1. When you look at this, you want to see that we are the gold, and we want to be well below that gray bar, because that is the state average at Level 1. And so you can see, from the district standpoint, we're below, and then all the way through all grade levels in ELA reading, we are significant, in some very significantly below Level 1 percentage, which is phenomenal. Okay? And then we look at the same with Level 3 and 4, shows the flip side, we're outperforming the state in almost every grade. And this is just a really, really good jumping off spot for us to know, okay, moving forward, where do we continue to make gains, where do we continue to grow? But this is a phenomenal start. So now we're going to break it down just a little bit more. This one's going to show you basically, on regards to grade level standards, it's just a very, very broad standard type, but it does show you where our students performed. And what I did here is I highlighted, for our own sake, where our students scored the best at the grade level, and then where our biggest challenge was. And what these percentages are, is not the percentage that they got correct in that area or that content, it is the percent of students that scored at the state average or better. So like take 4th grade, for example, 86% of our students scored at the state average or better in text types and purposes. That's really good. And 90% in language and reading in 5th grade, phenomenal. Even our lowest areas, we still had 64, 68% of our students scoring at or above the state average in that content. And so, you can start to look at this and say, okay, is there a tier 1, is there a core issue that we can look at? I don't want to make any assumptions based off of one year of data, because we don't know if it was just this test. So you really need multiple years before you can start really drawing those kinds of conclusions, but it does give you spotlights to be able to start looking at. And so when we look at that, reading information may be something that we want to start taking a look at in our core. But overall, these are extremely exciting to get to talk about. So, that is ELA.
So what you're saying is the red one, the red numbers are still above the state average?
Yes.
But those are the areas that our kids had the hardest time passing on the test?
Just on B E C I broad.
So, what is reading information?
Well, reading information is going to be more of your like, not, like your nonfiction type, your reading, your text type, instead of your fiction and your literature, it's going to be more in that specific range right there. Okay? And that one's a very broad, it's very broad, and so it will drill down. This is a very broad, and the teachers are like, yeah, this is great, but it doesn't really tell me anything, which we are going to get more information to come, but this is a very broad overview to start.
Okay.
So then we move on to math, alright? So let's take a look at math again, extremely positive. On this slide, you can see that our average scores are higher than the state averages 6 out of the 7 grade levels, and then we're only slightly, almost exactly the same in one grade level at 3rd grade. And so, as we narrow that lens now, to Level 1, even further, you can see that, from the district standpoint, we're well below, and then every single grade level is below, or in Level 1, which is just really good. 4th grade, 6.8% of their kids, that's phenomenal. And then we look at it on the flip side with Level 3 and 4. Again, in some grade levels, it's a vast margin. Again, we're not going to make any assumptions based on one level of data, but man, this is exciting to get to start with, and this is exciting data to get to share as a benchmark test as we move forward with this test. Now, the math one is not as pretty as ELA, because they have a lot more, their, their content varies across grade levels, and so it's not as easy to get on one slide. But you can see kind of the same, the same concept applies here. So as you look at this, you can start to, as a grade level teacher, or as a grade level team, or a building, you can start to look at, okay, where are we seeing core trends? And after we get this year's data, we'll really be able to start really dialing in and looking at some of that. And then we're, are taking our interns right now, and that also will provide the same information and dial it down even further, so that we can start to see if there is a core or a tier 1 trend somewhere that we are, have a gap. And so again, just really, really great stuff here. I had to ask what my variant data was, because I did not know. But we did, the kids do, because 90% of them scored at or above the state average, so really, really good. Alright, and finally, science. Grade 0 is here as well, the average scores for our 5th and 8th graders are well above the state average. Super exciting to see. And here you can see it, across grade level, and then how many are in Level 1, 2, 3, and 4. So again, significantly lower than the state average in Level 1, and significantly higher in Level 3 and 4. Alright, so, I know I said this was a benchmark, and you're not supposed to compare, but I wanted to show this, because I think it's a really important, I think it's a really important graph. Because I wanted to show that even without starting this, this new test, I think our, our trend would have continued the same, because you can see, we were on a slide with our Level 1s from COVID, basically from COVID since, and even slightly before COVID, we were on a slide down in our, in our percent of kids that are in the Level 1. And I did put a trend line on there, but, but you can definitely see that that was, that was taking place. And so, I firmly believe we would continue to see that, that slide here regardless of the new scores or not. And so, the percentages are still the same, and so I, I think it's really valuable to see this, knowing now though, that our benchmark will start with this year, and then moving forward. And you can see the same trends in Level 3 and 4, that we were starting to rise in Level 3 and 4. And so we just continued that on with this last year, which is, which is a credit to our teachers and our students, and how hard they've been working. And so looking forward, we're going to use this year as our benchmark year. They have not given us a target yet for KISA, and how we're going to be compliant in our accreditation, they haven't set that measurement yet. They want to get two to three years of data before they do that, so we don't know the target yet. But we're going to hit it, I have no doubt, with, with what we're putting out, I have no doubt we're going to hit that target. So we're going to just continue to monitor and analyze the data, and continue to collaborate in the lineup for and at tiered supports. Do you guys have any questions, comments, celebrations, concerns?
So I've asked this like every year when we have this presentation, and I still, maybe it's me not quite understand, there's no way with this new system to track grade 4 this year, now they're grade 5 the next year. There's no way to track that we, that the grade, the group is getting better as they go from 3rd grade to 8th grade. There's no way for us to track.
You definitely are tracking that, yeah, we're definitely tracking it, but it doesn't grow that way. So what this test does is it measures your, measures your grade level standards, so it's not necessarily a growth measurement, it's how well you understood that grade level's standards. Now, if I understand the grade level standards, I should be growing with my knowledge, but it's not necessarily going to show that with my percent, my percentile, does that make sense? Because I may be in the 60 percentile in 4th grade, and still be in the 60 percentile in 5th grade, but I am understanding the grade level contents.
Well, yeah, but I mean, so we could get more of them from grade level, the Level 3 to Level 4. Did we, did we get more kids that, let's say we had 50 kids in grade Level 3 in 5th grade, then when they went to 6th grade, can we get more of those in? then when they went to sixth grade, can we get more of those into level four?
Yeah, I think with, I'll go back on this one.
Am I missing?
Yeah, that's okay. Right here, this is the whole district, but you could break it down by grade level, and then look, the trends will look the same.
Okay.
For the most part. For us to come out this way as a district, it would have to look pretty close to the end. There didn't be one grade level that has an anomaly or whatever. But in order for us to trend this way as a district, it has to trend that way for the most part across grade levels.
Okay.
So.
With the new cut scores, I noticed that the level one actually encompasses more.
Yeah.
Versus the old ones. And for us to show the growth is a really positive sign.
Absolutely.
And we give my credit to the teachers.
Yes, ab- absolutely. And so, yes, there, some, some of them grew a little bit in different directions, and, but it was just minimal. And so I didn't really wanna get bogged down in the weeds on that, but yeah, absolutely. That, that these scores are, are really great. Really great. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Positive, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, determining the process for selecting USC three sixty representative for the Palo Recreation Commission Board.
Yeah, so, um, the Palo Recreation Commission, the way it's set up, is that it's a five-member board. Two of the members are appointed from the, the city, and two of the members are appointed from the school district. And then those four actually will elect or appoint the fifth at-large position. And so, when this was originally, um, started, um, before years ago now, um, each of those terms were staggered by a year. And so, we had year one and year four on the initial one, um, the initial, um, board, if you will. And so that, that first position, which I believe is Scott's position, is up for appointment. And so, in the, um, in the, on the board docs, is the, the document or the application that has historically been used. This was the first one that we've used. The city has used the same thing, just in says, instead of referring to the three sixty-eight Board of Education, says City of Palo. And what we've done in the past is we have advertised, if you will, for anyone that is interested in serving on the, um, to fill this position, to fill out this application. And then they submit it. And it would be due by December first to, we ask them to, to email it to Lorley, and, and by December first, and then it's included in the December Board of Education materials. And so what I need to know is, in the past, when this has been done, besides the information that they include in the application, which is community involvement or experience that you would bring to the board, your strengths that you would bring to the rec board, and your vision for the rec commissioner or the rec board. Um, they have, um, asked them to come, and they, they, so they could visit or interview the applicants. And so, there is nothing that says you have to interview the applicants. I believe, I can't, you can't quote me on this, I believe maybe the city chooses off the application. And so really, what I need for tonight is to know how the board would like to move forward. Uh, the, this is set up for them to come in to interview, just because that's what has been done previously. But if it's like, hey, we wanna make the decision on just what the application is, that's fine too. I just need to know how to adapt it, so I can get the information out, um, for, and if there's questions.
How many applied for it last time?
Uh, I can't answer that.
The last time?
Maybe it's like fifty people.
Uh, it was like it's, yeah, I was gonna say, I'd make, I'd make less.
We did, we did two at one time, and then next year we had to do another one. And there was four or five for that one too.
The at-large position is actually up as well. And so, what I envision is that we will send this out, because we encompass anybody that wants to be on, the rec board falls under the USD three sixty-eight umbrella, where the city is a smaller than the city limits. Um, and so there's actually two positions. One would be appointed from this board, and then the other would be from the, the rec commission itself board. Um, and so, um, whenever we have the applications, then we will share that, um, with the commission. So, there is no right or wrong. I, I guess really, it's, it's, as a board, would you like the person to, to come, so you can ask them questions? Can you talk to them? Or if you want to choose just based, based off the, off the application? Those are the three questions that ask for them to answer. But it also, um, states, please attach additional information you would like to share regarding their application. So it's not really limited to that.
Scott, in the past, do you think it was beneficial to sit down and talk to the people in person?
I, I think you should, yeah.
I thought that too, but I'm just wondering what your thoughts were.
Yeah, because you, you just kinda get a feel. That would be my suggestion, but.
I'm good with that, because I think it's helpful. At least put a name to the base. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we'll keep it the way it probably is.
We'll do that the December meeting or January?
December. So we'll, I will, um, we'll, we'll submit that out for community, um, and try to advertise, um, by, before the end of the month, um, and then we'll ask for feedback for, um, for the December meeting. And then they would actually be at the, be placed on the rec commission board for the January meeting.
These are all inside US, people available are inside USD three sixty-eight?
They have to be.
That's usually more applicants, because you get the whole.
Yeah.
Where the city is, you have to be within the city.
So they have to be a resident of USD three sixty-eight, and eighteen years of age are over.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm, they, they can be in the city limits.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're in the city limits, you could apply for.
Anyone, anyone that lives within the district, regardless if you're in the county or city.
Um, bus contract extension, Jimmy? Oh, did I miss myself? I did miss myself. Um, we have a, just a reminder that we have a special meeting on October twenty-first, uh, board meeting at the Palo Middle School at eight AM.
Yeah, so now, bus contract. Um, so, as I mentioned previously, uh, in last month's board report, to give you some background information, we are in the final year of our bus contract. And so, I kinda did a little recap of that, but just kinda, for the sake of bringing everybody the historical perspective forward. So back in twenty-ten, eleven, uh, was when we went out to bid for our bus service. And at that point, we awarded a five-year contract, uh, to our current transportation provider. I say current, because the parent company is North America Central, uh, School Bus. But here, and their Illinois Central School Bus is their main hub, but here they're doing business as Kansas Central School Bus is what our buses say on them. So, all of the above are current, but that is the bus company. You know, like when you see a rental agreement or whatever, we're now referred to as the bus company, uh, just for simplicity. But, that was in twenty-ten, eleven, a five-year contract. Um, and then in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, we did a two-year extension. Uh, that was extension number one. Then there was a second extension, uh, two years later. Third extension, two years later. And four years later, there was a five-year, uh, extension. And that was fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And so that's the one that's ending now through, uh, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So at the end of the school year, that contract, uh, would sunset. So Matt and I have, have been working with them, as we have always in the past, um, you know, on the contract and the negotiation of that process. Uh, and they have presented us with a five-year extension proposal, which would go through two thousand thirty, thirty-one. Seems like spacetime to me, but, uh, we're gonna be there before we know it. So it's a five-year extension pending approval tonight. Um, there is negotiation like anything, with, um, you know, the initial offer and the final offer. And we, we kind of did, did our homework and survey other districts. It is very difficult, like with a lot of things, to compare apples to apples. Because if you look at other districts' contracts, route prices are all over the place, because they might have a single route, they might have a double route, they might have a triple route, meaning that bus is going out and running two times, if they have staggered start times and things. So, difficult to compare dollars. But if you look at percent of the contract terms, you can kinda get, uh, a good perspective, a good lay of the land of what others have had recently. So, there's some key districts, um, you know, similar in size and geographic area that we surveyed and looked at their contract provisions. Um, what kind of terms they agreed to, whether they did an RFP or not. Um, a lot of, generally speaking, a lot of transportation providers, because they, they already have their costs here. So, sometimes stay with the current, you know, new one coming in, there's gonna be a lot of startup costs and things. So, a lot of times, even an existing incumbent will front-load their contract fees or their increases, and they stag, or they kinda decrease them in app years of the contract. So they're, they're kinda front-loading, and that's how this is designed as well. So again, like I mentioned, comparing that to other districts to see kinda what their provisions are in the app years and things, and just knowing what inflation is. Uh, and then I'll, I'll share the details of the contract review. But that's kinda the background or the metric of looking at that with a value. And just satisfaction with, with service, that if you obviously were looking at a change in a provider. Uh, even though I will say editorially that, you know, typically your company, you know, just like our manager here and our bus drivers, they're all local. E- e- even if our company is from Illinois home, they're, they're, they're the local people. And that's really what, to me, drives it. And so, that would probably a lot be the same regardless of the name on the bus. So, I think that's, uh, always key to remember. So anyway, the final, uh, five-year contract agreement, uh, proposal was to increase rates four and a half percent in year one, three and a half percent in years two and three. And then beyond that, it's tied to a consumer price index, CPI, AKA inflationary provision, if you will. Uh, but it is a minimum three percent per year. And so those are all spelled out in there. And we were able to negotiate some of those down to what we felt, what we're presenting here tonight, that we thought were favorable terms. Again, like I said, compared to others, and just knowing what, um, trends and things are running on cost. Um, the other provisions in there, uh, they have requirements stated in there about the age of the vehicle. There are laws on that too, um, like the, the oldest vehicle you can use, and then the average age and things. When we first went to them, that was, you know, we had, we had pricing on a couple different. And if you want newer buses, it's gonna cost you more, because obviously buses are very expensive, so. Um, that's another provision in there. And then there is a termination clause in there. The either party can terminate the contract, even though it's a five-year agreement, uh, at the end of any school year, giving notice by November first. So that cuts both ways, if we want it out, or if they want it out. Uh, that date was, uh, a point of discussion too. Uh, originally, it was much later, and, you know, after about this time of year, you really don't wanna be going out to bid for transportation, because it takes a long time to get the new vendor here and get buses. And we're fortunate that we own the facility where the buses are, but if they have to acquire, there just aren't a lot of properties that can be set up that way. And by the time you set up the bulk fuel tank, and all those things, with the environment on the regulation, it takes some time. So for us, the nice thing is, we own that facility. Which, by the way, is in tandem with this. You see the contract extension and the bus barn lease addendum. That's the lease of our facility. And just to remind you for the general public knowledge too, by them using our facility, we don't rent it out, but we get a credit on our bill. So basically, it's the equivalent of one route and one bus monitor for free. Uh, as, in exchange for the free use of the building. Because we don't wanna get into rental properties and things, so it's, it's, it's a trade-off credit system. But again, we own the building, we improve the parking lot for the buses to park on, uh, and we lease the bulk fuel tank. So, there's, to me, reasons why you don't necessarily wanna own the bulk fuel tank, but we have that, and it's all set up with our supplier. So, the term of the setup is ours, which is, to me, a big plus. Um, I think I covered all my heads, but thoughts or questions? That, I just wanna kinda give the overview history. Um, like I said, Matt and I work with them, survey the other schools, um, knowing kinda what contract provisions are, what inflation is. These seem like reasonable terms. Um, but again, just, whatever questions you guys have.
We felt in the best interest to, and why we're recommending that we extend, we extend the, the contract with the five-year extension, instead of going to bid. Anytime you go out to bid, um, you do. And especially right now with the, the volatility of, of, um, just the economy and, and costs and so forth, that you could, um, that the prices that we feel like, and, and talking to our colleagues that have went to bid, um, it was not as favorable. And, and actually, just to get the most favorable, um, terms would be to, to do the extension. So that's why we're, we're recommending, recommending that as, um, an action item, and we'll get to that.
Okay, now to open forums, we have one open forum.
Just what's that?
This one? Okay.
Well, that, that's not supposed to exceed five minutes, am I?
Okay, just a reminder, it's not to, to exceed five minutes. Um, each, the patrons are advised, the Board of Education members will not entertain questions or discussion, and will not take actions according to Kansas law, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen. The board shall not hear personal complaints concerning any employee or group of employees of the school district, or any person connected with the school district during open session, B, matters relating to security of the board, the school, school buildings or facilities, or information systems of the school, and C, other topics defined as part of KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen. Those items listed for closed executive session. And, Elsie Blackmore?
Is everyone ready?
Yes.
Indoctrination is defined by Mary Ann Webster as, to instruct, especially in fundamentals or rudiments, teach. It was said by a member of the board that what they hope to keep out of the classroom is just that, teaching. Educators are here to teach more than just their respective subjects. They are here to prepare us for life after high school. That means teaching tolerance, empathy, and accountability. That is what the teachers who had those signs in their classrooms were doing, teaching. Indoctrination in its connotation can be problematic, but the members of this board do not truly care about indoctrination, because on the walls of the high school, on the second floor, there is a mural. On that mural, there are handprints, and on about three of those handprints, though there may be more, there are block Bible quotes, written on the walls of our high school, a public, taxpayer-funded school. If the school owns the walls, then the school needs to uphold the practice of separation of church and state that has been valued in this country for nearly two and a half centuries. Yet, there are Bible quotes on the walls of our high school. And unlike the safe zone signs, every person in that school has walked past this mural. Because in, because there is a classroom right next to it, in which every kid that attends PHS must take a class in, in order to graduate. Every single student has seen that mural, and every single student has seen those handprints. At first, I wanted the mural to be taken down. Clearly, it is in violation of much more than the policies than the IFA policy. And while I still do believe that the right thing to do is to take down the mural for that reason, it is ultimately the decision of the administration and of the board members. Because it would be hypocritical of me to persecute you, since I believe in fostering a safe learning environment for individual express, in expression. But allowing this mural to stay up when the signs had to come down, shows that the school board members do not agree with me. This shows that they do not even care about upholding the IFA policy, they only care about serving their own agendas. So, if we go along with your definition of indoctrination, then your actions contradict your supposed values, further showing your lack of commitment to your responsibilities of representing your constituents. By allowing this to stay up and not the signs, you are sending a clear message that you are here to ostracize teachers and alienate students that do not conform to your beliefs, the exact opposite of many of your campaign promises. If you truly care about whether or not children in the schools were being indoctrinated, that mural would have been painted over in December, when the signs were taken down. I encourage everyone in this room to hold these supposed representatives accountable, and make sure that the mural comes down. Because any excuse that any board member could give you to justify keeping it up, are once it could be made in favor of keeping up the safe zone signs. So I ask you, will the mural be painted over, and when? When will these signs be put back up? Are you going to start taking accountability and do what is right? Or are you going to continue on with your self-serving agendas, indoctrinating our children? Thank you.
Okay, action items. Approve bus transportation contract extension and bus barn lease.
I'll make a motion to approve the transportation contract extension and bus barn lease addendum.
All those on paper?
Those, thank you.
Uh, approve annual USD three sixty-eight district audit.
Yeah, Lorley will, uh, so this is the same time in every year, uh, that I know everybody looks forward to the audit presentation, just as much as I. It actually is really good information, so all serious, this is being serious about it. It's a great tool, and it's requirement, and so we get this done. It's a great tool and it's requirement, and so we get this done about the third week of every July, which is the world's craziest time in the central office in the business of things. But that's when it makes sense and I'm thankful that our auditor, we've had that date for so long, we keep it. A lot of districts do it till later. I like to have our audit done and over before I present the budget to you. It's just another double check. And why not do it right after the fiscal year? Wait six months, your memory fades and things aren't as crisp. So as much as the timing is rigorous, it's good to get it done. So this is the end result. So that field work happens that third week of July, and then it actually continues on even after that. But our auditors are here on site that week to do all their reviews, and then there's a lot of work that goes on. Board members get involved in that. There's verifications that go out to entities that we pay, entities that pay us, the banks that we use, all the verifications, standard accounting, auditing checks. And so then they, again, that's the field work. They complete it all and they usually get that back to us in September, usually by the end of the month. I try to present that always in October. We have to have it filed by December 31st. So I like to get things done early and proactively and not wait till the last minute on things. So hence why this is the normal cadence of really talking about the audit so then we have time to file it. In the past, we had the audit disclosures and the bond compliance disclosures, which I carry that history forward, but our bonds paid off, so we no longer have to do that. So that is a good thing that we don't have to do, and there's no more expense of doing that either. So you'll still see bond-related things in here, but that additional disclosure is no longer required because there's no more reporting. That was to the bond financial markets for bondholders to evaluate the credit where we mess with the district. So that also had a due date of December 31st. So the audit report itself, it's all in board docs and it's all publicly available, so that's out there, the electronic form of this bound book. The audit review document that Laura Lee's displaying up there is something I created many years ago and it's kind of evolved over time. This is my summary of the summary. So I will promise I'll try to, but I think there are important things to go through. So I'll kind of hit the highlights and then we'll entertain any questions and hopefully ask for your approval of the audit so we can get all that done. So Laura Lee, you can make that as big as you want and just kind of scroll down. So the audit, again, I reference all the page numbers, so the audit, so you can go back for that to verify things. But again, a lot of it, this is the expense side. There's a ton of information in there. It's kind of like a budget that you can slice and dice numbers a million different ways and you really got to dig in to know, is a plus good or a minus not good? Or, you know, it's all in the data. And I won't try to, I'll hit the high level of it tonight, but start there. So I show a two-year comparison because to me, if you just show one-year data, you can't see your trend like English, I would test for the thing. So two-year trend, we have of course many, many years, but not to make this too cumbersome and cluttered because this is kind of how it presents. So you'll see two-year ago data and then last year data. And so then the difference column is something that I ran there so you can see the plus and minus. And again, you need to know the why. General fund, again, and a lot of this has to do with expenditures, you know, you can even get into the tax realm of things, so I'll try to point out what things are taxpayer issues and what are not as we go through. But general fund, again, is all state money, so it's all tax dollars, but that's the state aid that we get, and the base state aid has been increasing the last several years. So that was increased year over year, so that's based on our head count, and that's special ed. So those are the two components that go into there. So that was a $749,000 year-over-year increase. And then the LOB, again, is 33% of the general fund, so that's corresponding, not exact math because again, the LOB has a different calculation than the general fund, but generally speaking. So those two added together, the general fund and LOB, year-over-year increase in this audit period was $1,2,846. This kind of ties back to, if you go back to my budget presentations, you'll see that slide where I show the budget increases and things. Those kind of mirror this, it's just the end result where those are sometimes projections, so they may not match exactly, but it should be in that realm of ballpark figures. Let's see. So if you scroll down, again, all of these are in there in detail, and this is just the expenditure. She can see the beginning balances, the ending balance, all that's part of the audit. But again, year-over-year expenses is what I think is the most important in tying that back into budget. So things I'll point out in this middle section, so special ed code 30, that's our special ed fund. Again, we host the co-op and actually you can go up just a hair so you can see that one, the 30 fund.
See it?
Oh, stop. Yeah, you're good. So that's page 31 there, and you can see there the special ed fund expenditures were $257,000 increase. And again, you remember in the budget presentation about what our special ed assessment has done. So again, I point that out, but that's the payroll part because other things in here are not necessarily just payroll, so I always want to make that distinction too. So capers, that's a flow-through. There's no local control over the amount. In years past, usually we had four quarterly payments, some years it's been three, some one year it was five and we had to republish. Again, that's all legislative flow in and out, but those things change in whatever the state funds that. So that's a flow in and flow out, but again, so it's not really operational money for us. The co-op fund 78, so that's the flip side of special ed down there. And again, I was doing this from this far back, page 35, I think is, if I'm not lying across there. So you can see special ed, the co-op expenditures were up $988,000. So at the bottom of this section, I show the overall increase, but again, that's not just USD 368. So it's good information, I think is why I include it, but again, you can't say payroll school district spent $2 million more. It's all those things above, it's capers, it's the co-op, it's the health insurance reserves, we're self-insured, all of those things. The other big number in there you see in negative, the coronavirus COVID relief funds, those funds are down. So it went from 1.6 million a year, expended the rest of that fund to zero last year. So obviously, that's a negative decrease, you know, again, in the whole relation of things. So don't get too caught up on the overall total, but I put it in there because I think it is helpful at glance. But again, you got to go through the breakdown of that. All the restricted funds, again, I mentioned bond and interest is paid in full. The health insurance reserve, of course, we can't use that for anything but health insurance nor would we want to. That's an important fund. I'll talk more about that down at the bottom, there's a whole section because of the importance of it. But again, the costs are up. Why is that up? Is that good or bad? It depends. It depends what if our health insurance enrollment was way up. If the enrollment is down and the costs are up, that might be bad. So you got to know more than just that number. But again, we'd be here all night if we tried to break it down to that level, which we can always do at a later date or anything you want to go deeper on. The flow-through in the yellow, well, not all of the yellow, but student funds, so that's activity funds. Again, student raised money belongs to students, so it's not anything for district operations because it's part of our financials and part of our audit. The rec commission is that flow-through. Again, we talked about that tonight, so that money is collected by the school district, paid to us from the county, and then we turn right around and pay 100% of it back to their recreation and they control the dispersment and the spending of it per their board. And then the endowment association is in here too, and again, that's not for school use, that's set aside money that people gave specifically for endowment, but that's that bottom line. And that depends on the market fluctuation, that money is actually invested in the stock market. So you see the ups and downs and when people give money or how much we have paid out, all those things impact that. So again, that overall, that $2 million increase, again, you got to know why, because again, our budget is revenue neutral and we actually are revenue negative, as I've coined. We've decreased the overall tax burden. If you look at your taxpayer notice, you'll see that. So again, this tells a slightly different story because this is looking at everything, not just tax implications or property tax. But that $2 million, if you just look at that in the total, it's about a 3.6% increase. And then the net expenditures, which again, the reason that ties into the double-page spread of the audit report, just to make it present the same how they show net expenditures, if you look at the net, it's 3.55%. Not a lot of difference, but again, thinking about inflation and things, it all, I would propose that that's all in the realm of reasonable, but again, you got to know the why of the pluses and minuses. So it's just a gauge to look at. Okay, scrolling down to the bottom, so health insurance, you can see I've got all that in there from about 2009. We've been self-insured longer than that. That may have been the year that I started this report, I cannot honestly tell you how I arrived at that. But I keep that running history in there because this fund is so important. And you can see easily at a glance with the red numbers in negative, those are the years that the fund decreased. And in the print there, obviously, expenditures exceeded revenues in those years. And again, why? Well, you got to know why. Some of those high claims, just any number of reasons. Did we increase employee rates? Did we keep them steady? What did we do with premiums? But the overall there, so if you look at that, that is 17 years of history. Down there at the bottom, you can see there were nine years with decreases, eight years with increases. Okay? That's almost 50/50. Overall, cumulatively, it's a $749,000 increase. Again, you see that in my board report every month, what the health reserve fund does, always got to keep in relation because it can appear to be a significant sum of money. Always look at what the annual health cost is and what that trend is. So we're... And the other thing I would point out here, look at the last three years, they've been really good. And again, not all those were self-insured years, the two years we went to Blue Cross fully insured, which was good because we had that large unfunded liability. We don't have that anymore. So that's not really reflected here, it is elsewhere in the footnotes, but the year and it is in my budget stuff and in the budget review, the years we were fully insured. But again, that was part of those increases because we knew we were going to have to go back to self-insured because of the Blue Cross underwriting, favorable terms that we got, the gift from that and eliminated that unfunded liability, which was $1 million plus. But you take away any of those last three years that have had good planned increases, take away one of those and suddenly that $749,000 doesn't look very good. Take away two of them and we're back to negative. So not to temper it too much and not to be, bring down the good news of health insurance, but we're not out of the woods yet for that. That's still an ongoing thing that we got to watch. So it's trending the right direction, we just need that to continue. And again, we've just done our enrollment and all that changes, the plan year you see in my board report starts October 1st. So this starts a whole new year and we'll see how things go there. So enough about that. Page two is all the footnotes and things in there, these are kind of some summary of things in there. Again, I really won't go through a whole lot in there, but these are kind of the highlights that we've always talked about in the past, things that are like unfunded liabilities or potential liabilities. For example, number one is when we pay out sick leave when people retire, that's about a $98,000 liability for days that people have accrued based on their age and things. State aid distribution, for many years, we got aid after July 1st, you had to record in the year Keller remembers as well, she's not on her head. With state revenues and things, that hasn't been a factor. I've left that in there just for historical, hoping that never comes back into play again. So again, that was previously reported as in substance payments, so it says we got no payments subsequent to June 30th. Everything we should have got last fiscal year, we do get last fiscal year, that's been true for many years. The long-term debt in there, the bonds, again, we were at $4.3 million. We paid all those off in September, so again, this does up June 30th, that's why that's still in there, but we're now paid off in full. Scroll on down. So number four, deposits and investments. Again, obviously, we have more money than FDIC insurance in any of our bank accounts. Jenny Myers, who is here tonight, is our treasurer, is in charge of that, does the monthly treasurer report and makes sure all that's pledged. And so that's the auditor verification that all the deposits were legally secured by either FDIC insurance, collateralized securities, letters of credits, or in the case of our first option account, we use that Intrify account where it's really farmed out to other banks inside the FDIC limit through the sweep account. So maybe my time's up. Capers, transfers are in there, operating leases, the only lease we have that's reported in there is our copy machines. Now, I will point out there that one year ago, we approved the enterprise lease on the cars, but as you remember, we aren't leasing our cars. We've acquired them through them because the state bid went away, but we paid cash out of capital out of the foot cars. So that's why it's not there. They're technically, legally a lease, but there's no debt obligation because we didn't borrow any money, which I think is the right thing to do. Health insurance, again, just how much the district's putting in. The activity funds there now with our new software and limited system, you're seeing that on a monthly basis with the financials, which I think is a great addition because you used to only see that once a year, kind of going to get added here. Now you're seeing that every month, which I think is good, just kind of adds transparency so you can see those on a more frequent basis. The district, when you see the X's there because it's only in district funds, not the others, so... But relatives, other things are in there, so... Then the important thing with the audit, all the federal and the internal controls, they're evaluating those, there's the single audit requirements. We're always going to exceed those because we host a special ed cooperative and even just kind of food service alone, if you have over certain thresholds of federal dollars, you have to complete the single audit. We're always going to trigger that because of special ed and hosting the co-op. But again, that's all the disclaimers in there, that there's no non-compliance, no deficiencies. It's a good audit, it's a clean audit, which is what we always strive for. New, the top 10 taxpayers. That used to be part of those bond disclosures. We don't have to do those anymore, but I didn't want to lose this information. So I'm planning to put this in there every single year as part of the CPA audit, even though it's not required, because I think that's good just to always have it back in your mind and to be aware of. You know, it kind of gives you just a snapshot view. So I got this from the county, top 10 taxpayers, and I think sometimes it's just good to know. Now, some of them I put, like the Doing Business Arista Recovery, I put that in parentheses so they actually report it, it's Flashpoint, but who would know what that is because different entity names. But that is Arista Recovery, which is the old Ursulin property. So again, that's back on the tax rules, but you can see all those there. This is sorted by assessed value, and so it's high to low, and a lot of it's utilities and things, things that you don't necessarily, at least I don't necessarily think about, but like the railroad and Evergy, I mean, Evergy $20 million, obviously that out of the hole. The top 10 total is $35 million. So again, you can look down those, but I think it's important to note who those taxpayers are, they are paying a significant cost to do business in our community, and I think it's just good information for all of us to be aware of. Then the taxes, so that's their assessed value of their properties. The taxes, you'll notice, are not necessarily in numerical order, and the reason for that is some of them are not located in the city limits. And if you're out of the city limits, you don't pay a city a payable tax. So even though you may have a higher assessed value, you may pay less tax because you're outside the city limits and you're not taxed on the city limit. So I just point that out as a clarification there. But I think that is just good information and I don't want to lose that, so I plan to keep that in there every year. Okay, kind of quit looking at my notes, so I think I covered it all. But it is, again, you can slice and dice and spend hours and hours and days, but it's a requirement, it's good information, hopefully it's helpful. Hopefully, the summary, believe it or not, is a summary of this wonderful big book and there's so much data in here. And again, it's all available publicly, and I'm always happy to slice and dice or drill down as far as you like to drill.
Thank you for making the summary of the summary.
I'm sorry, it's a few changes legal front and back.
You can compare it back and forth.
It is a summary of the summary. Yeah, it is. I prefer it a lot personally.
I have a motion to approve the annual USC 368 district audit.
So moved.
A second. Those in favor?
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you. Bring that together.
Absolutely. I'll do it again next year.
Madam Vice President, I move that we go into executive session with Matt, Darren, and Jeff to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and that we return to open session in this room at?
Twenty minutes.
At 7:25?
That's fine.
Second. Second. Let's hear it.